It's noon, okay. Okay.
The Warhawk Way.
Oh, cute. Okay. Okay, is it five o'clock? All right, here we go. Are we ready? Okay. Okay, you ready? I call this meeting of the Pinellas County School Board, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, to order. All right, we have Pastor Joyce Stone from Christ, the Cornerstone Church in Pinellas Park, on the line. So will you please stand for the invitation and then Ms. Kane will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, I ask a blessing upon this gathering. I ask you, God, that you would bring wisdom and guidance to those that are participating in this meeting, God, to do your work for your children and for this area. God, I just ask a blessing upon all that they do. May they continue to know that the work that they do is important for all of us and especially our children and young adults. I ask a blessing upon this gathering this night in your names, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are joined tonight by the Seminole Singers under the direction of Lauren Cottrell with the choral and guitar. She is the choral and guitar director. Welcome. Ms. Patel, would you like to introduce the second song?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us here. Our next song that we're going to perform today is called Bright Morning Stars. It is a Kentucky folk song. We'll have three soloists at the beginning here. We'll have Lauren Kavanaugh. We will have Paige Anderson, and then we will have Patty Schmidt.
[singing] Bright morning stars are rising. Bright morning stars are rising. Bright morning stars are rising. Day is breaking in my soul. Oh, where are our dear fathers? Oh, where are our dear fathers? They are in the valley praying. Day is breaking in my soul. Oh, where are our dear mothers? Oh, where are our dear mothers? They are gone to heaven shouting, shouting, shouting. Day is breaking in my soul. Bright morning stars are rising. Bright morning stars are rising. Bright morning stars are rising. Day is breaking in my soul.
Thank you so much. That was just gorgeous. And I have to say, I am a graduate of Seminole High, so go Warhawks! Except that was before you and maybe even your parents were born. That's how long ago. I'd just also like to tell you that Ms. Jane Lucas, the principal, is here, and Assistant Principal Jess Fisher. Great job. Okay. This past weekend, the all-county middle and high school bands performed at the Mahaffey Theater. These concerts are always phenomenal, and it was no different this year. Let's take a look at our very talented middle and high school students in action.
This concert, our band concerts, is the first in our all-county music fest series. And, you know, it is just one of my favorite times of the year because we get to showcase all of our strong music programs. In our series, we started this morning with our middle school band, so we had a sixth and seventh grade group. And then, one of my favorite things is they got to watch the older kids after. We had our eighth grade group. So by structuring the concerts that way, the younger students get to observe the progression. They get to see where they'll be in a year or two.
The magic happens when you're playing the music at rehearsal or performance, and you see that they're intent on your every move. They're breathing when you want them to breathe. They're doing the dynamics. And all of a sudden, it's like, and it is magic. They hear it and they respond to it, and it gives you chill bumps when it all comes together.
It's a great experience. The music that the composer picked was very exciting to be performing as an all-county student. I feel like it pushed me to be more confident about playing my music.
You know, another great aspect of our all-county series is our students get to work with different teachers. It's also great professional development for our teachers. So we'll have Dr. Shelby Chipman working with our eleven-twelve group, and he is not only the professor of bands at Florida A&amp;M University, but he is our current Florida Music Education Association president. So just thinking about how amazing it is for our students to get the opportunity to work for a week with the president of our state organization, it's just, it's mind-blowing.
This is so inspirational. I tell you, it's exciting. But when you get here and you see the fire, as I like to say, in the students' eyes, and you hear the first sounds, it just gives you that inspiration to know, as you connect with the students, to introducing them to new concepts and new ideas, pedagogical approaches, and they respond, the way this group has responded this year just makes it all worthwhile. It's just truly humbling and exciting.
It's really exciting to see her perform with, like, an ensemble group and showcase the skills that she's learned in school and see how hard she's worked after school.
For our family, the arts are so important. Growing up in the arts and going through high school, myself, through the arts, it just gives such a well-rounded education.
He's always been a great student. He stays focused, gets his work done, and I think that just contributes with the music and gives them some standards they have to stay with.
It means to me that he has camaraderie. He's got a group of friends that have similar beliefs and structure. I think that the arts really help their minds develop and grow as they get older and build their careers.
I think that today I want our students to know that they can keep going. So part of the reason that we structure the concerts this way is that the students can see the next step. So by getting to work with college professors, for example, they start to think, oh, I can, I can continue with this into college.
I would say the state of bands here are stellar and second to none. The quality of instruction is very evident in that not only do you have the high school students performing and the middle school students, but you have various elementary school programs that are doing amazing things, and I know they have their annual festivals, and all of that is a part of the growth and continuity and the matriculation as students go from one level to the next. And that's not always seen in all districts. We could only hope that districts will be inspired as they see the different communications about what's taking place here in Pinellas, but certainly the leadership here in this district is to be commended.
I'm always impressed to see our students and thankful to the wonderful staff and guest conductors who make these concerts possible. This coming Saturday, January twenty-ninth, will be the upcoming Art All County Choral and Orchestra Concerts at the Mahaffey Theater. I hope that if you have, looking for ideas for Saturday, you drive down to the Mahaffey Theater. It's going to be incredible. And while Mr. Spencer's still here, I want to thank you because this past weekend with the Martin Luther King Parade, Tarpon Springs High School, Palm Harbor, and Eastlake joined together, and Gibbs High School did incredible performances. And there were families from all over North County that just lined the streets, and they were just in awe of what our students could do. So thank you. What a great opportunity for the people. All right. Isabel Mascheranis is here to introduce our professional organizations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grego and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, we have Nancy Velardi, President. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, we have Tiffany Ford attending virtually. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome Brianna Hoda Vance and Matthew Glukowski from Seminole High School and their principal, Jane Lucas.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Hoda Vance from Seminole High School. I'm a senior at SHS. I'm Student Council President, President of International Thespian Society, Vice President of National Honor Society, Vice President of the English National Honor Society, Vice President of ROKAPA, a member of Muafah Theta, Tech Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, Interact Club, and Key Club. I'm also a part of the SHS golf team. Thank you for the opportunity to share all of the great things that are happening at Seminole High School, the home of the Warhawks. At Seminole High School, we aspire to live our lives with purpose, respect, and grit. That is the Warhawk Way. Each student at SHS has a purpose for learning, exhibits respect for self and others, while developing grit to persevere towards success in college, career, and life. Our faculty, staff, and student leaders pursue this mission together in a relentless manner each day. Our class officers, student government, athletics, academies, and academic and performing and visual arts student leaders continue to create a culture of positive vibes and school-wide team spirit that is second to none. The Warhawk Nation has hosted, as well as sponsored, sold-out athletic, arts, and community-wide events. From Friday Night Lights to Homecoming Spirit Week, Battle of the Classes and Dance, from the Warhawk Marching Band's Seminole Spectacular to our hosting of the Gulf Coast Robotics Competition and everything in between, the positive momentum keeps building for our SHS educational ecosystem and community. We are excited to share with you the AP experience for the 21st century learner at Seminole High School, where all students have the access and opportunity to take advanced-level college courses, as well as achieve industry certifications before they graduate a Warhawk. This has resulted in our advanced placement course enrollment more than doubling, with more than eight hundred students currently enrolled in at least one AP class. The commitment of the SHS faculty and staff is such that they support the unique and effective teaching model of offering only honors and AP course curriculum. This brave and innovative shift has created more relevant and rigorous opportunities for all learners at the Warhawk Nation and resulted in greater academic achievement and success school-wide. With our modified block schedule, Seminole High is able to have an Infused Academic Resource and Social Emotional Learning Advisory Period, AR for short. This AR period is embedded within every Warhawk student's school day and provides an equitable setting where students receive academic, social, and emotional supports while also forging a connection with a professional mentor. Multi-grade-level peer-to-peer relationships are fostered as well. Through AR, we can achieve a hyper-focus on our mental health and safety slash security initiatives, as well as the Health Information HIP Project, a national student-led program that ensures the physical and mental health of rising high schoolers. Academically, their AR-SL advisory period also provides extra support with grade-level seminars, push-in interventions such as ACT and SAT bootcamps, and assessment strategy sessions. SHS is a Golden School Award winner in leadership and school volunteerism as designated by the Department of Education. Seminole High School is a five-star National Blue Ribbon Award-winning school, also recognized by the Florida Department of Education for our overall academic excellence and progress in closing achievement gaps. SHS is recognized by the Florida Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Project as a Bronze Medal Award-winning for being a PBIS Model School. This exemplifies our continued commitment to positive outcomes for all students, and the Warhawk Nation has been awarded the National PTA School of Excellence Distinction of Honor for 2022-2023. Athletically, the Seminole Warhawk Nation has experienced amazing successes. We had five swim team athletes achieve state finalist status and three swimmers who are PCA C-finalists. Seminole High School's Sports Academy utilizes Pixlot technology, streaming live from our gymnasium, football, baseball, and softball stadiums. This broadcast and photojournalism coverage and commentary is presented by students in tandem with professional mentors. Our boys' basketball team is currently ranked second in the district, and our very own softball coach, Shannon Tyson, was named Coach of the Year. Each one of our visual and performing arts groups are excelling in every genre: vocal, instrumental, orchestral, visual, and performance. Seminole High School's Visual Arts Department is partnering with St. Petersburg Class Project to be the only high school glass studio in Pinellas County Schools. Art students have placed in the Word and Image Show, Surreal Show, New Perspective Show, and Scholastic Art and Writing Show. Fifteen honorable mentions, two Silver Key, and one Gold Key Award. Phenomenal SHS student artwork is displayed throughout Seminole High School and right here in the Pinellas County Schools Administration Building. Our jazz band performs weekly in the Warhawk Courtyard with a rousing weekend send-off for students and faculty. Chorus, jazz band, and the orchestra performed at the Seminole City Center for the Holiday Celebration Tree Lighting Ceremony. We have eight all-county orchestra players, eight all-county band players, including two principal first-chair musicians, who will perform in the Pinellas County All-County Music Festivals. The SHS Orchestra, which has the legendary historical distinction of having performed at Carnegie Hall, is hosting the Florida Orchestra Association District Music Performance Assessment this year. Each of our jazz bands was selected by Clearwater Jazz Holiday Foundation to perform in the Young Lions Jazz Master Sessions, and our Warhawk Marching Band is the grand champion of the Pinellas Park Holiday Parade Competition, a top twelve state finalist at the Bands of America Orlando Super Regional, and a finalist for the Florida Marching Band State Championships. Our incredible four A Performing and Visual Arts Academy leader, as well as SHS Warhawk Marching Band Director, Mr. Gerard Madrenin, is the Pinellas County Music Education Association's Secondary Music Teacher of the Year Award winner. Now, I'm turning it over to my fellow senior, Matt.
Good evening. My name is Matt Glukowski. I'm a dual-enrolled senior at Seminole. I'm president of E-Commerce Academy, a member of the National Honor Society, and I play on the Warhawk baseball team. Seminole High School is only, is, excuse me, is one of only eight schools in the nation that has been designated as a Model School of Excellence by the International Conference for Leadership and Education. This honor is due to Seminole High's mission and success in getting students connected while achieving and sustaining academic, social, and emotional growth. Our seven academies, as well as the vibrant school-wide avid program, along with the emerging perimeters of our new STEAM Academy, and our more than sixty clubs on campus, ensure that students are provided with a community of care and motivation to find their passion and a place to belong. Highlights of these programs range from Media Technologies' SHS Morning Show, which broadcasts to our entire student body and includes extensive programming on AR block days, to the E-Commerce Academy, which is our Academy of Distinction. The creation and implementation of our online school store, the Warhawk Shop, was a student-driven effort. This innovation has streamlined virtually all financial services at our school. The Warhawk Shop is quickly approaching $650,000 in product sales, Warhawk gear, tickets to school events, and other necessary educational items. Because of the students and teachers' amazing vision and success, the E-Commerce Academy at Seminole High School is also a recipient of the Florida Association for Career and Technical Education Innovation Award. And one of our Academy of E-Commerce teachers, Mr. Dan Kennedy, is Seminole High School's Emerging Teacher of the Year. Seminole High School's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, or STEAM Academy, is proud to have a member who is a Sunshine State STEM Scholar Award recipient. SHS STEAM will also be a part of the FWEA/AWA Florida Water Sustainability Festival at the St. Pete Pier this March, and will host the AWA Water Model, Model Water Tower Competition this year at SHS for all Hillsborough and Pinellas County middle and high schools. Our STEAM program has been awarded over $35,000 in grants for technology to support student engagement and innovation. SHS STEAM program, STEAM drone program has successfully launched, pun intended, and students are incorporating this technology with remotely operated student-built submarines to determine the water quality. The water quality data will be analyzed using ArcGIS to illustrate temporal and spatial differences. Working in tandem with our STEAM program is Pinellas County Utilities South Cross Bayou Education Program, who won the Secondary Business Partner of the Year Award for Pinellas County Schools. The Center for Educational Leadership, known as ARSEL Academy, has 100% of our seniors successfully participating in internships at four local middle schools, as well as Seminole Middle School and in our ESE classrooms. ARSEL Academy juniors are facilitators with the HIP program at SHS, and several ARSEL student leaders, along with Academy Director Ms. Deanna Russo, created the new on-campus organization Educators Rising, which spotlights amazing teachers on our campus. Other ARSEL members are working in tandem with our Live Free Substance Abuse Education Program as well. Incidentally, Ms. Russo is Seminole High School's Teacher of the Year and a top-ten finalist for Pinellas County Teacher of the Year. Go, Ms. Russo. Over the past three years, our ARSEL students have earned nearly three and a half million dollars in college and university scholarships. In the literary and scholastic realm, our Hawk Talk magazine is the American Scholastic Press Association's first-place winner, and our Warhawk yearbook is a national sample for the fourth year in a row. Academically at Seminole High School, we have over twelve national and international honor societies. Seminole High School overall continues to demonstrate strong academic growth while promoting more rigorous coursework with innovative support systems for all learners. This year, we are proud to announce our National Merit Letter of Commendation Award winner, Megan Arbuckle. Our overall graduation rate continues to soar, and it's at a historic high for Seminole High School at 99.2%. To live your life with purpose, respect, and grit is the Warhawk Way. We, as the Warhawk Nation, claim this vision with a relentless team spirit. We appreciate this opportunity to share the successes and highlights of our school year so far. We've also left you guys a gift of appreciation for each of you. Thank you to the school board members and Pinellas County Schools Executive Leadership Team for your support, and as always, go Warhawks.
That is just amazing. I'm tired just listening to the two of you. Do you sleep? Does anyone at Seminole High sleep anymore? The principal doesn't, no. That was awesome. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along. Possible changes to the agenda. Dr. Grego?
Yes, Madam Chair and school board members. I have three amendments to the agenda. The first one is 7.8. It's a minor change, but it's the agreement with Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University for this year, and Clearwater High School's had an additional section added to it, so the price and the cost on the attachment on the principles of management with Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University has increased by 7.48. So that's a change in the, in the price, and that's been posted electronically on your agenda. The second is 7.14, 7.14, and that's the request for approval of a supplemental educational plan survey. I'm pulling from that the Tomlinson Adult Learning Center because I want to speak comprehensively. I shouldn't have been put on there, but I want to speak in full to some of the concepts and ideas that we have at our February workshop, and then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda in future meetings. And the third is addition of 8.2, of non-consent agenda 8.2, which is a request of approval of the COVID sick leave pay memorandum of understanding the MOUs with Pinellas County Teachers Association, Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, the SEIU, Florida Public Services Union, and the Fraternal Order of Police, and COVID sick leave pay for professional and technical supervisory and non-represented support staff and administrators. These were just finished. The last one was ratified as of yesterday, so bringing it to the board and walking this item in for the board's approval and consideration and approval today. That concludes the amendments to the agenda.
Anyone else? All right. Regarding amendments to today's agenda, the chair finds good cause to amend the agenda as just described by Dr. Grego. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Hein, a second? Okay, Mr. Dudley? All right. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes seven to zero. All right, moving right along, our special order agenda. The first one is the presentation of the Proclamation of the National African-American History Month, February 2022. Dr. Grego?
Yes, Madam Chair and school board members. I couldn't be more proud of our district being recognized repeatedly by the State Department of Education for standings with and recognition of the National African-American History Month in February. He's already, he's already approached the microphone, but I'd like to introduce Matt Bloom, our nine-three-twelve associate studies specialist, and we have a special guest, Mr. Clark, who I recognize from Pinellas Park High School. So thank you so much, sir, for being with us today. Mr. Bloom?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Grego and staff. As the high school social studies specialist, I'm happy to be able to present for African-American History Month. African-American history-related benchmarks and standards can be found in many social studies courses, but there are also standards-aligned ways to infuse African-American history into courses like English Language Arts. To help me present this evening is Mr. LeFranz Clark, an English teacher at Pinellas Park High School. Mr. Clark has been a presenter on behalf of our district at the Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force and a participant regularly for many years. Pinellas County Schools celebrates the many achievements and contributions of local, state, and national African-American figures throughout the year, and particularly during the month of February, National African-American History Month. This is a time to highlight the struggles, successes, and contributions of the African-American and Black community in the United States. The theme for African-American History Month 2022 is Black Health and Wellness. The Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force supports Florida districts in implementing the teaching of the history of African peoples and the contributions of African-Americans to society in accordance with state statutes, rules, and standards.
Since 2015, the African-American Heritage History Task Force has recognized Pinellas County Schools as an exemplary school district for our standards-aligned implementation of African-American history. To date, the approved exemplary status has only been awarded to ten school districts in the state of Florida. As was mentioned, I have been a presenter at the Summer Institute As was mentioned, I have been a presenter at the Summer Institute as well as a regular participant. Attending the Summer Institute has given me access to high-quality resources and the ability to meet other educators and members of the Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force. The Task Force supports teachers to engage their students by using local African-American museums and heritage trails to foster learning. These experiences have enhanced my ability to help students connect with African-American history locally and nationally.
Last year, and again this year, it's an honor for Pinellas to have been invited to help develop and support the Task Force's, the Task Force's annual statewide Summer Institute. The Summer Institute ensures awareness of state requirements while providing tools and resources to support Florida districts. While we continue to teach our state standards, Black History Month provides an opportunity for students to continue to learn about the contributions African Americans have made throughout our nation's history.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. I should have had a motion and a second, so I apologize. May I have a motion to go forward? Dr. Carr, and a second?
Second.
Ms. Edman. All right, Ms. Edman, would you go ahead and read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation, African-American History Month, February 2022. Whereas during African-American History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter "Goodwin" Woodson noted, "Black scholar and son, former, son of formerly enslaved parents, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History." And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham, and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African Americans in the United States. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as African-American History Month, and is now celebrated across North America. And whereas, 2022's theme, Black Health and Wellness, offers a rich opportunity for acknowledging and exploring the legacy of Black scholars and medical practitioners throughout the African desporah. It is a theme that considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that Black communities have done to be well. And now therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize February 2022 as African-American History Month and urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed, this 25th day of January 2022.
Vote, all those in favor of the proclamation for National African-American History Month, please say aye. All those against? Passes seven to zero. Dr. Carr? Okay. All right, for the next, for the next two presentations, we're going to make the first time in, wow, about a year and a half, two, seems like a long time ago. The board is going to go down for our master board presentation, so.
As board members and the general public, as we go down, I'd like to introduce Andrea Messina, who's the executive director of the Florida School Boards Association, and this award being presented to the board is a master board of, a master board distinction. I'm sure you'll explain it, so I'll head down there, too.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. I didn't know where you guys were going to come from. Well, I'm actually going to speak to your public, because I want them to know all that you all have done. So, my name is Andrea Messina. I'm the executive director of the Florida School Boards Association. We recognize the governance team of a school board to be your school board that is duly-elected, as well as your appointed superintendent. Research shows that when the board and the superintendent work together as a governance team, that can help to increase student achievement. And when they learn together as a governance team, then they can have shared learnings. That, there is research that demonstrates that when districts do that, make the commitment to learn together and to work together, it reflects in student achievement. So I'm here today to recognize your governance team with the recognition of master board. They have earned this by completing 20 hours of training in governance, trust, communications, and culture, and it's a real pleasure for me to be here tonight to thank you for your commitment to your community. This is voluntary training, 20 hours that they have to do all together, okay? So, just as you would expect professional development from anyone with whom you work, this is the professional development that they have asked of each other to commit to, which they have done. So join me in recognizing them and thanking them for earning the master board recognition. The next recognition is actually an individual recognition, and we're here to recognize Caprice Edman. Now, I don't know how many of you know this, but the Florida School Boards Association has individual leadership development and training. We ask our school board members to complete 96 hours of voluntary training. Caprice here earned her emerging leader, which is 50% towards her certified board member, and then she went ahead and earned the certified board member all 96 hours within a calendar year, which is mostly unheard of. This, yes, thank you. This training is in the areas of school finance, policy governance, bargaining, boardsmanship, state and federal processes, and school law. And her commitment to these 96 hours of trainings demonstrates her commitment to the students in your school district. She wants to be a better board member, so she can serve her community and the students better and affects student achievement. So please help me welcome Caprice Edman to the recognition of certified board member.
I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Edman's commitment, and also, in the context of the situation of so many of those courses under this current time and climate, and the additional, which I happen to know you also additionally engaged in so much internal professional development, both for, I believe, ESE and ESOL and other things, so you have really embraced this role and have taken it upon yourself to go above and beyond what, what folks do as a board member, and I really appreciate you as a colleague.
All right, we have one more.
I think she, she wants to say.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Edman.
I, again, just want to thank you all for your support and just uplifting FSBA for their support of professional development and being there a phone call away. And as Ms. Messina mentioned, this is, this professional development and putting in the hours of work is so that I can be more effective for our constituents. So thank you. Thank you.
We have the presentation of the 2021 Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee Annual Report to the Pinellas County School Board and citizens of Pinellas County, presented by Mitch Lee, chairperson and independent citizens referendum oversight. Dr. Grego?
Yes, Madam Chair and School Board Members, and really to the general public, this referendum has been in place since 2004 with the strongest approval this last election cycle in 2020, but I can tell you that Mitch Lee has served as, in, on IC Rock, they call it, for 17 years, so.
Tell me it's not that long.
He's a, he's a tremendous supporter of Pinellas County Schools, so I just, I can't pass up the opportunity to publicly thank you, Mitch, for your service, not only in IC Rock, but also as you sit and serve on the Pinellas Education Foundation, actively serve on the Pinellas Education Foundation. So thank you so much for your service. Mr. Kevin Hendrick is, will present this item.
Thank you, Dr. Grego, Madam Chair, board members, and staff. In November 2004, Pinellas County voters approved a referendum to support public schools and have since renewed the referendum four more times, most recently in 2020. The school board established priorities for spending the additional funds, with 80% dedicated to teacher salaries, and 20% of the funds to support reading, visual arts, performing arts, and technology. Since the referendum's inception, the board established the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, or IC Rock, to function as an advisory group to the school board. IC Rock meets quarterly to review referendum expenditures and ensure that initiatives are following the intent of the board and the public. IC Rock includes representatives from the Pinellas Economic Development Council, the Concerned Organization for the Quality Education of Black Students, the League of Women Voters, the Pinellas Realtor Organization, Arts for Complete Education, the Pinellas County Council of PTAs, and the Pinellas Education Foundation. Each year, the IC Rock chairperson presents an annual report to the school board and public. This year's chairperson, as you heard, is Mitch Lee with the Pinellas Education Foundation, and he will present the 2021 annual report. Mitch?
It's always nice to be back in front of the board, Madam Chairman, board members, staff, and Dr. Grego. It's hard to believe it really is the 17th year, but we started this in '04, as you heard, and some of us are still around from the very beginning. I and one other member, I think, are from the original group, trying to figure out how we could do this job in the, the right way and the most effective way. Well, IC Rock continues to meet quarterly to oversee referendum expenditures and provide assurances to the board and the public that funds are being spent to meet the intent of the voters. In our quarterly reviews, we pay close attention to ensuring that this year's funds are spent on this year's students in a responsible and equitable manner. With last year, last school year being both in-person and online, the referendum was able to support students and teachers in both settings. It is my pleasure to present the following highlights as examples of initiatives supported by the referendum. Last year, a total of $38.1 million was allocated in the 2021 school year budget towards recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers, with $5,231 going to every teacher's salary. This is a $507 increase from the previous year, 2019, 2020. And I can tell you from personal contact with teachers, it's a very important part of recruiting and retaining teachers in this district, and we're lucky to have that. Over $9.5 million was allocated to support the arts, reading, and technology, and it's about $2.4 million to each of those areas. There's two reading areas, the, the lower and the higher part of our school system. In the visual arts, every art teacher received discretionary funds to purchase classroom materials, and hundreds of teachers benefited from enhanced professional development. Summer enrichment experiences continued with referendum funds supporting 22 summer in-person and virtual art camps for 373 students, including providing take-home art kits. In the performing arts, 68 elementary classrooms received funding for instruments and equipment. New teachers received enhanced support to ensure a successful start to their careers, and high school band uniforms were replaced at two high schools. In partnership with the Florida Orchestra Funds, we're supporting the Florida Teaching Artists Initiative. Additionally, referendum funds supported all county events, outdoors, and virtual, and partially funded a K through 12 Dunedin bagpipe instructor. In technology and digital learning, the long-term goal of outfitting every classroom with interactive technology through smart boards and other devices continued. Last year, 263 additional classrooms received new or replacement interactive boards or projectors, and hundreds of additional teachers received training and support. The digital learning team also purchased software to help support classroom instruction during simultaneous teaching, in part through support from the referendum. In support of reading, the referendum supported every school with funds to purchase supplemental materials for their classrooms. These funds placed additional novels and instructional, instructional resources in schools based upon the individual needs of the school. Funds continue to support targeted programs for K through 2. Hundreds of teachers attending training specific to the needs of their students and the Florida standards, and a virtual student literacy conference was held for secondary students, exposing students to local and national authors. Finally, reading referendums funds also supported efforts to improve student scores on the ACT and the SAT. As we look forward towards next year, continued referendum implementation, IC Rock will remain steadfast in providing oversight on these invaluable resources and keep the school board and public informed of the district's progress. And of note, charter schools will begin receiving funding in 2022, and IC Rock will ensure they have the same transparency and oversight as we have for all schools. Thank you. I would open up for any comments or questions.
I just want to say thank you. You know, the referendum does a lot for our, our teachers. It does a lot for our students. That gives them a nice extra for their salary, and I feel the arts are very important. It makes for a well-rounded child. Life isn't all about academics. It's about music and creativity, and we're stimulating parts of the brain by providing these programs. So I thank you, and I thank you for your dedication to make sure that we are spending the money correctly.
Thank you. I would like to say, since you mentioned the arts, you've got a very arts person next to you, and Lisa Kane, she supported a, a nonprofit organization last year that I'm a big part of. It's called the Florida, it's called Project Hero on the, we have a Florida Honor Ride for injured veterans and first responders every year at a Tropicana Stadium. We'll have over 500 cyclists there. And Lisa took me off the hook last year and sang the National Anthem for us, and we'll do it again coming up on the 5th of February, so.
That's wonderful. I have to make.
And I would be remiss in not recognizing another member of your board and just say congratulations for the Army-Navy game, Laura, Laura Hein, since I'm an Army-West Pointy guy, and she's Naval Academy, so. I'm about 22 years before you, though.
Just a couple. Just a couple.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Cook, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
This thing isn't working.
Mitch, before you leave, would you please share with your group how much we appreciate what the Oversight Committee does? You are the ones that helped keep us honest and to make sure that every child is getting access to the funds that are being raised. I think it's a lot of what you have done and your committee has done that has helped us pass this referendum so many times, because they understand that we're not just taking the money in and then having special pet projects, but it actually is reaching all levels in all schools. So thank you very much for the number of years that you have served on this, but also please thank the rest of the committee for us.
Yes, I certainly will. And I will tell you, it's, it's not, it's, it's really an easy job in terms of transparency and making sure things are done well because of the school district. And I'd like to point out two of the, the members that really help us do that in your staff for the school district, and you've already heard from Mr. Kevin Hendrick, and he does an excellent job of helping the, the committee do their job, but also Mr. Kevin Smith on, on the board and the, the financial. And I will say that I did my, my own math on this, Kevin, but I, I might ask you to double-check it, but I think we're well- it, but I think we're well over half a billion dollars in the seventeen years. I came up with about six hundred and eighty million dollars, and we're approaching in another seven years probably a billion dollars.
Yeah, that sounds about right. In fact, this year, we expect to bring in about fifty million dollars additionally in the 2022 school year, so we're exceeding that. A lot of money.
I will pass it on to the committee. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Have three opportunities to address the board when we are gathered for our meetings. The first opportunity to speak is during public comments on the agenda items. The next opportunity is when there is a public hearing, most of which are policies. And lastly, after the meeting is adjourned, we will remain for public participation when speakers may address items pertaining to the business of the district. Each of these opportunities for public input, members are here to listen to you. This is not a time for discussion or debate. We will not take any formal action on information brought forward unless it is pertaining to an agenda item. However, the board and superintendent may clarify statements or refer the speaker to the proper staff person to help work through your concern. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in the conduct of our speakers. Whether you agree or disagree with viewpoints expressed by speakers, please refrain from showing audible support or disagreement. We also ask that you assist us in the maintaining of civil and constructive environment by confirming your, by confining your comments to the business of the district and refrain from profanity and intemperate or rude comments. And I'd like to just say, remember that we do have students in the audience, and, you know, when we come together and we work together, we are much stronger than we are when we're disagreeing and not able to make progress. So, please remember that. All right, Ms. Houk, are there any speakers on the agenda items?
Madam Chair, there are no speakers for agenda items this evening.
No speakers? Let's go to unfinished business. The public hearing to consider the amendment to policy 0143.1, membership, the district board member residence areas. This is the board's second reading, and there are no changes from the first reading. Dr. Greggo?
As Madam Chair, Mr. Koperski is going to introduce this item as he's worked with this board in, I believe, one or two workshops prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Greggo, Madam Chair and Board Members. This is a second reading on a policy that relates to the redistricting. Remember, we talked quite a bit about that in November and in December, and on December fourteenth, the school board passed a resolution to conform your single-member residence areas to those that were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners for their single-member districts. So, this is simply a second reading of that policy. The resolution was passed, the information was posted in the newspaper. I've already been in contact with the supervisor of elections even before 2022, and so they're all set to go, but you do need to formalize the second reading of this policy for your own policy manual.
Okay.
And the last thing I would say, Madam Chair, is that there are no speakers signed up for this public hearing.
I need a motion. Okay, and a second?
Second.
Ms. Admin. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven to nothing. All right, consent. I need a motion for this agenda. Ms. Cook, and a second. Mr. Dudley. And we can take a vote, right? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes seven to nothing. All right, let's go down to non-consent. This is request approval to waive the attendance portion within policy 5420.03, reporting student progress and class ranking, the high school for the second semester of 2021-22. Dr. Greggo?
As Madam Chair, as I discussed in the last workshop, I was, we were going to bring this forward. This actually comes out of the Division of Teaching and Learning, so I'm going to ask Mr. Kevin Hendrick, the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, to just present it to the, to the public and to this board once again.
Thank you, Dr. Greggo, Madam Chair, Board Members and Staff. This year, for the second time, we're coming to the board and asking for a waiver of the policy for exam exemptions for high school students. As you know by board policy, all students in high school take an exam at the end of each semester, both first semester and second semester. There are a number of rules governing student exams, including those that they cannot be assessed twice. So, for example, a state assessment would prompt them not to take a regular high school exam at the same time. But each year, we have the opportunity for students to exempt certain exams if they meet certain criteria. Those criteria include an A or a B grade, the fact that they cannot exempt a class twice in the same year, and they must have four or fewer absences in all classes. For the fourth consecutive semester now, we are coming to you to ask for you to waive the attendance portion only of the exam exemption policy, as we continue to ask students to stay home if they're not feeling well under the current COVID protocols. And so, the remaining provisions of the attendance or, the attendance and exam policy, including both grades, and the fact that they can only exempt once a year, would remain in place.
Okay. And once again, I, I don't know where I am right now, but I need a motion. Ms. Heine, and a second? All right. Any discussion? Dr. Carr?
I appreciate the consideration to this, and I'd like to request that we have this as a potential future topic for workshop, because it has been ongoing, and I think it's important for us to review and examine if there, from staff, if there are other potential ways to incentivize attendance and look at the implications for mandatory attendance and, and just investigate it a little further as a concept and to see where we need to go next steps, because it has been each semester. So, I just, if other board members find that necessary or valid, I think it would be an important thing to discuss further at a workshop.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes seven to nothing. All right. Items introduced by this, oh.
One more.
One more, I'm sorry. Eight point two, Paula Texel is going to bring this. Do I have a motion? This agenda doesn't have.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Greggo?
As Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Dr. Corbett, Deputy Superintendent, to present this memorandum of understanding, as I introduced earlier in the board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Greggo and staff. In March of 2020, Congress passed the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, which provided paid time off for employees who were unable to work due to reasons related to COVID. However, that expired in September of 2021. So, in October of 2021, the district and all bargaining teams agreed on specific terms and conditions for which employees would continue to be paid, either through paid sick leave or through the use of the district's sick leave bank. We believe that that agreement was very important in that it provided employees with the ability to get paid following agreed-upon guidelines when they were required to quarantine. That agreement, however, expired on December seventeenth of 2021. So, due to the ongoing need for employees to quarantine due to COVID this year, the district and all bargaining teams have again agreed on the specific terms and conditions that should be made available again. All of the units have approved this MOU. The most recent one was yesterday afternoon at four o'clock. This new agreement will be in effect until March thirty-first of 2022, and as with the other previous agreements reached with the bargaining units, nonrepresented employees will follow the same terms and conditions. So, on behalf of the superintendent's staff, we are highly recommending that you approve the agreement with all bargaining units as well as for nonrepresented staff.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, it passes seven to nothing. All right, new business. Items introduced by the superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair, I too want to reiterate just a special thanks to our Performing Arts Department, because they did come out in rare form, but certainly our bands at Tarpon Springs, Eastlake, Palm Harbor, Gibbs High School that marched up at Tarpon, and then also Lakewood, Gibbs, St. Petersburg, Hollins, and Seminole High School in the St. Petersburg Parade, and also the twenty-six students that were awarded scholarships by the NCNW Annual Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Awards. And two students from Gibbs, Elijah Dixon and Eric Reedick, won educational incentives. Twenty-four, twenty-four students won a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in scholarships. So, just want to recognize that there's so much more happening through that day than, not, not that the parades aren't important, but there's a lot more beneath that. Also, I want to say, if you were here last evening, the tremendous crowds that came through, we had an open house last evening. As you know, there's about fifteen hundred pieces of artwork throughout our building, and last night, we had an open house for the parents and the students to come and celebrate and take pictures in front of their artwork, and they did, and boy, did they ever. And so, they infiltrated our offices, and we had a wonderful, wonderful time with them. Thank you to Jonathan Ogle and the entire visual arts team. There were teachers at every corner of this building directing people, and it was a real great celebration of the visual, of the visual arts. As, as the chairperson mentioned, the all-county concerts are so, certainly underway. Jory Spencer is doing a tremendous job with that, and as you can see on our website, the orchestra and chorus, choirs will be playing this weekend and the next several months. If you ever want a performance, there'll be one scheduled by our school district. We also, Pinellas Park High School students won the Congressional App Challenge. We've won this one other time, I believe, but the students Trudy Quoc and Gabriel Marina and Jenna Nuying won first place in the Florida's thirteenth District Congressional App Challenge. Their application, called Healthy Minds, helps users keep track of their mental health and access benefit resources. U.S. Representative Charlie Crist will be meeting with this winning team, and congratulations to all of the teachers and principal and school for continuing to promote this activity. As you know, tomorrow is our Teacher of the Year Evening of Excellence celebrations. The show kicks off at seven PM, but there are events earlier than that, and I'd certainly welcome the board or anyone else to, it will be live, and it'll also be streamed, and there'll also be, the ten finalists will have their streaming families and supports as we did last year. So, we're taking a lot of what we learned last year when we were totally remote and making it into what I think is going to be a really super evening. So, thank you for, to the Pinellas Educational Foundation. Last week, I traveled with Dr. Byer, and we, we provided prizes to all of the ten finalists and had an opportunity to, to truly have some special time with them. Those prizes include five hundred dollars cash awards, scholarships, certificates to Nova Southeastern, gift cards for school supplies, suite tickets to the upcoming Raze Games, and certainly good luck to all of our teachers, but those teachers represent every single great teacher that we have in the, in the school district. I also want to remind parents, as you've seen, the Ready Set Kindergarten took place last week, that we're continuing, we're starting the registration for next year for kindergarten. It's never too early, and we really do want to urge families to register their, their children prior to the rush in the summertime. Let's get it handled, and let's get it, let's get it done right now. Parents can learn more about that, again, so much information on our website, but www.pcsb.org/kg for kindergarten. So, and we, the, the application period is also open for pre-kindergarten. As you know, we're continuing to grow the VPK programs in, in our district with, with pre-VPK programs throughout our school district, as we've grown to over a hundred and fifty sections, and we're looking to grow even more. That concludes my, my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Items introduced by the school board attorney, Mr. Koperski?
I have no report. Thank you, Mrs. Long.
All right. Items introduced by the board. Dr. Carr?
Thank you. Several things. There we go. Just a few things I wanted to follow up. I know there was a request from our Teachers Association regarding setting a goal or resolution, and I've been struggling to find the appropriate one that I wanted to have going forward until we had, as usual, an enlightening student presentation. They always emanate a great deal of pride when they put forth their presentations, and one of the key indicators, I've been trying to determine how to best focus some of our mental health needs, and the sense of a place to belong was something he acknowledged and was grateful for at Seminole High School. So, my goal will be to seek and acknowledge those educators who provide opportunities for students to have a place to belong. So, there's my resolution for you, Ms., from our association. Also, I want to share that we each take an opportunity to participate in the monthly meeting for the Pinellas County Council of PTAs, and it was my turn this month, and our folks were incredibly efficient in their time. It's, I think many of us have served on PTAs before and, or in leadership even within the Pinellas County Council, and the meeting was very successful. I brought from the board opportunities about Level Up and also the e-learning coaching. Also, served with the homeless group that I always try and report back on, and the point-in-time training will be happening this week. Our point-in-time count will take place this week. I participated in the point-in-time training, and I'll be part of that group that goes out to do the point-in-time count, and I appreciate any of those of you who also took part in that. And with that, I want to say thank you to Dr. Cantrell from our own district, who shared valuable information with the community about current status of homelessness in our district. It was captured in one of a local media outlets, I believe it's the Catalyst, and I think that was really important to enlighten the public on the great need in our community to address concerns around our homeless youth and families. Also, went to our peer meeting, Retired Teachers Group, and one of the questions that folks had was how do they learn more about the, the things that have taken place for us to address COVID? And because when I shared all the things, especially the pieces around the air quality, Mr. Herbig, they, they really wanted to know more and how they could continue to share it. So, I expressed that they could look at our reopening plan on the website, and I just thought others in the community might also be interested in that. And along with that, how we're planning and some of the successes we've had and highlights that were brought up at our workshop for some of the implementation of how we are addressing learning loss that has occurred, and I just want to make sure folks know how much is available at the website, at our district website, and how much folks try and, and push that information out, even if it doesn't always get captured in the media. When a press release is done, it has to get picked up. So, I just want you to know that our website is a valuable resource for finding those pieces of information. And they're, they questioned some things about being on the board and experiences on the board, and I just want to share with you how, as fellow board members, because I know this is our, it's a public meeting, but this is the only time we have these conversations, is in the public eye. So, just to recognize how well this board represents our community in the fact of our diversity. So, when I was speaking with them, I pointed out, and I wanted to share with you and the public, you know, five of us have school-aged children. We are parents. Two of us are married to teachers, so we're familiar with the educator's experience. Five of us on this board have worked for Pinellas County Schools in a variety of roles. We have veteran on our board, we have business owners on our board, six of us were active members in local PTAs and some on the members in local PTAs and some on the Pinellas County Council of PTAs, serving in leadership roles. We are a variety of ages. The major, three of us, three folks graduated from Pinellas County Schools. So, and it might have been four, but I think it, four. So, but that we really are representative. We live in different areas of the county, but that we really represent our community and that we are continuing to work hard, as was acknowledged in the recognition of our board training, to work effectively and efficiently together in a collaborative way in the best interest of children. So when, sometimes we get those tough questions at a meeting about any division amongst our board, I just wanted to share with you, that's how I answered. So you would, you would recognize that I value you each as individuals, even if we haven't always voted in the same way. Also, I just want to say thank you because I was remiss over time. I don't know how I missed Linda Balcom's retirement. I know it's been a little bit, but I don't want to miss that opportunity to express how much we have appreciated her with the purchasing agenda over the years and how excited I am to have met our new purchasing person, Joe Benjamin. I feel like it's an incredibly enormous task to have to go through the bid process, and oftentimes, that's an area where folks have questions about how did we come to purchase this item, what was the process used? And we have had previous workshops on that. We've delved deeply into that process. We individually often have gone to speak with Mrs. Balcom in the past, and I'm sure with Mr. Benjamin in the future, about how the purchasing has taken place. So I'm really going to miss her, but I'm excited for the new opportunity there. And lastly, in regards to our proclamation for African-American history, I just want to express gratitude to our history teachers who go above and beyond that expectation and to the, the further expectation that African-American history isn't taught in isolation only in February, but in fact, integrated throughout our curriculum and taught in all of the months because African-American history is U.S. history. So I just wanted to express that gratitude to them, and that ends my report. Thank you.
Ms. Cook? Yeah, recently, it was brought to my attention that some of the people in the public are still concerned about coming and speaking to us, and they're concerned about whether or not we call the FBI in on people who say things that we don't necessarily agree with or don't want to hear or whatever their interpretation may be. So I want to put some pieces together of what happened because things have happened, and frankly, at the very first meeting, I did not go into a whole lot of detail because of time, but I'm going to go back to the National School Board Association's letter that was written. And it was written and sent out with the executive director having written it, the president having signed it. It was never run through their board of directors or their proper protocols and policies. So with that in mind, and the fact that we didn't agree with all of the content in that letter, specifically calling out the FBI, Florida School Boards Association took a position that we asked that, first of all, they retract that and that we ask them to get their, their organization in place. And that was in October. We had held our dues at that point, and in December, we decided that we would withdraw from the National School Boards Association. With that, we have agreed and an organization is discussing how they could, all of the states that pulled out, I think there are 23 of them, I believe, don't quote me on that number, that are coming together to say, how can we fill the gap that the National School Boards Association used to fill? For example, focusing on national legislation that pertains to education. Some of the things that were happening with national school boards is they were going a little farther out than what was just educational or health-related and that type of thing. So there is an organization that is getting started, and we will be hearing piece by piece as this goes along. Andrea Messina, who was here today, is on that committee to look at how can it be formed and if it's a good idea to form one. So we will, you know, like I said, be getting more information on that. But the thing that I want to stress is that this board does not call the FBI on people that come and speak to us. We want to have people come and speak. We encourage their input. That's why we have three opportunities for them to speak. And if there's any issue that happens, our local police will be the ones that will handle it. So I hope that you all understand the, the sequence of how things happen and where we are right now, as well as the public understanding that that was the biggest reason why we pulled out. That's just not what we believe, and that's not the way we're going to function in the future. So, thank you all.
All right, Dr. Corbett, do we have any board requests?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recorded one board request. We will put down for a potential future workshop topic to reexamine the exam exemption policy as it relates to attendance issues and other issues as well.
Okay. I'm going to now turn to. I'm sorry. I'm going to now turn to Ms. Kane for our positive thought of the day.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I so appreciate all the comments from board members. Thank you for the clarification on the National School Board Association. I know that's something that's been brought to my attention more than once recently as well. As we end the meeting, I have a great quote for today. It says, "Sometimes we expect more from others than we get because we'd be willing to do that much for them. Keep giving because it makes you feel good, not because you need them to give back. In the end, it is the giver that gets the biggest gift of all." So leave you with that.
I like that one. Thank you. All right. We will have our board meeting evaluation after public comment. So at this time, I adjourn the school board meeting. This is January 25th, 2020. All right, Ms. Houk?